Called to order the Cecil Township Planning Commission Meeting of June 18th, 2020. First up, old business. Wait a second. Jack, do we have minutes to approve? Do we have minutes to approve?
Minutes should be on the left, on your left hand side.
Okay, yeah. First off, actually approval of the minutes of the February 20th, 2020 meeting. Any questions, comments? Additions, changes, corrections to the minutes as they stand.
I move to approve the Planning Commission meeting notes and minutes from February 20th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions. Motion carries. Okay, old business. Application 2019-0029 Belacera Bar Number One Site Plan, applicant CAPS Development.
Hi, I'm Craig Banner here, representing CAPS Development. We called a couple of weeks ago, a submitted G table, the site plan, for consideration. Since that time, we have made some revisions. Where we're able to use the concrete patio that's there, we don't increase the size of the barn, we don't have to increase the size of the patio. We've submitted revised, revised site plan, we have responded to all of Gateway's comments. I believe we did correct what went wrong, there's that correction. Now, what we'd like to ask here tonight is your recommendation for approval. But I would request that you condition that approval on the supervisors approving CAPS conditional use. Out because of the COVID situation, we continually postponing the public hearing for the decision. We're hoping that in, at the July supervisors meeting, they will set that, that date, hopefully before the end of July. So that come August, they can make their decision on the conditional use. Site plan. If you're able to give us approval tonight, that will save us from coming back August and not getting our approval from the supervisors until September. Really pushed up against it because we're trying to get this barn set up so that we can use it for all purposes. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about G.
I have a letter dated June 15th, 2020. As Mr. Banner has stated, the applicant has addressed all the technical comments. I have some minor administrative comments that are in the letter. So I would recommend that if you did consider this tonight, that you consider it contingent upon addressing the comments in my letter.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments? This time, is anyone willing to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the Belacera Bar Number One Site Plan, contingent on addressing all the comments in Gateway Engineer's Letter dated June 15th, 2020, as well as addressing, or I'm sorry, as well as the Board of Supervisors' approval of the conditional use.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Cauldron, seconded by Ms. Hamilton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to new business, application number 2020-0006 Saucy Gally Subdivision Plan, applicant JR Gales and Associates, agent for the property owners Alfred and Maria Saucy, and Carl Allen Jr., and Annette Irene Gally.
Anybody here to represent the plan tonight? I'm sorry? Okay, so the Saucys or the Galleys are here? Oh, okay. I can handle it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the, what the applicant is proposing is, is really a lot line revision. Part of the property from Lot 6 is being, is being granted or proposed to be granted to Lot 7. So there's two new proposed lots, Lots 6R and 7R. We had initially issued a letter dated March 26th, 2020. They've addressed all the technical comments related to the plan. So it's in order for your consideration, as it stands right now with no contingencies.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Anyone willing to entertain a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for application 2020-006 Saucy Gally Subdivision Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Crutt. All those in favor?
Aye.
So you're approved now, the next step is to come to the Board of Supervisors' meeting on the first Monday of July? And the plan will be on the board's agenda for final approval.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, moving on, application 2020-0013 Twigger Subdivision, Number One Lot Line Revision, applicant James and Rebecca Twigger. Kerry Krater? Now, you can, you can pull your mask down if you want to, make it easier to...
This is basically just a lot line revision, adding a three acre parcel onto there.
Yeah, we, we reviewed the plan and we had issued a formal letter, had some minor technical comments, and the plan has been revised. As it stands right now, it's in order for your consideration.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions? Anybody willing to entertain a motion at this time?
I make a motion, we approve application 2020-0013.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Crutt, seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, Kerry.
Double feature tonight.
Yeah.
Next up, application 2020-0017 Aragoni Subdivision Plans, applicant Richard Aragoni. And Kerry again, okay?
So this is basically, I'm sure everybody has sold a piece of property, he's not going to get back. That's the extent of it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is property that's located at the corner of Georgetown Road where it makes the Big Bend to the left. If you recall, the Turnberry Properties, that sits to the east, and the Red Nine Property, we've seen a number of different applications from those. So the Deva, Deva piece is right at the corner. So they're conveying approximately, it's roughly half an acre, right? A half acre back to Mr. Aragoni. So, just a lot line revision. Mr. Krater's addressed all of our comments, and as the plan sits, it's in order for your consideration.
Any questions? Anybody willing to entertain a motion at this time?
I recommend that we accept application number 2020-0017 Aragoni Subdivision Plan.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hamilton, seconded by Mr. Crutt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to application 2020-0008 Fairfield South Point Lot Three Land Development Site Plan.
Is there anybody here to represent this plan? Oh, Mr. Salak.
Sure.
Premont. Outside. Yeah.
The South, Fairfield South Point's looking to develop Lot 3 in their development, in the progress, maybe in a couple of seconds. Planning on doing a little less than a 12,000 square foot building for an office and garage from yesterday, contracted. Going to the least to, we've worked with Mr. Bedroff and trying to address all his comments.
They had anything to add?
Just that this, this is the last lot, Eli?
I'm sorry?
Is this the last lot to be developed in the plan? So, last lot to be developed. The stormwater was all accounted for in the master plan. They, they do have a retaining wall. They're, they've asked for a modification on the height of the retaining wall. And they've provided a design on that wall that was in my latest letter. So they've addressed that, those two comments. And then there's this, some administrative comments that still need to be addressed, but for the most part, it's ready to go. I just recommend if you, you do consider approving it, that you do based upon my latest letter of June 17th, 2020.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Is there, Dan, is there any issue with the, with the buffer on the northern line, as their, as their responses?
Yeah, I think, I think I wanted Mike to explain that a little bit, but I guess what, what he's trying to say is, is that they can't plant a buffer because there's a West Penn Power line there.
Yeah, there's 54th West Penn Power.
Right.
Which encompasses the whole area.
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of up to the planning commission to decide on that buffer. I mean, this is the lot that's, is this the lot that's closest to the cemetery?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the floor elevation of the building is 16 feet below the property line. It's quite a bit lower.
So even if you put in a buffer, it really wouldn't be...
Right.
It wouldn't, wouldn't do anything. And you're not grading up along that line or anything more?
No, I'm not doing anything, it's already been graded.
And is it this grass now?
Yeah.
So I don't have any problem with that, that request.
Okay, anybody willing to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2020-0008 Fairfield South Point Lot Three Land Development Site Plan, conditioned on, conditionally based on the Gateway Letter dated June 17th, 2020.
I second that motion.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Cauldron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to application 2020-0010 Range Resources Connor Samuel Well Site Conditional Use, applicant Range Resources.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Range, I'm here on behalf of Range, my name is Jocelyn Ebert, I'm a local government representative with Range Resources. We submitted these applications to the township back in February of this year. In the essence of just providing enough materials for you guys, we weren't really sure how this meeting would take place, but we thought it would be best to complement the application binders and all of the materials contained in our conditional use applications in the form of a PowerPoint presentation. So, I did provide that to the township, if you don't mind, I'm going to project it onto the screen. And I know in following the agenda, these two applications are listed as item number five and item number six. I apologize, this seems to be cutting in and out. They are number five and number six on the agenda. The items contained in this PowerPoint will touch on both items five and six. So, we have some specific slides for each well site that we're here to talk about, and then we have some slides that give an overall representation of the activity that we actually plan to partake in at these locations. So again, my name is Jocelyn Ebert, I'm a local government representative with Range. Also here on behalf of Range, we have Carl Matts, he's our Civil and Environmental Engineering Manager. We have our associate division counsel, Brian Root, and we have our outside counsel, Blaine Lucas of BAPSC Callend, they're here. I'll probably do most of the speaking tonight, but on some of these technical matters, some of our other experts may chime in at any point in time. Just to reiterate, we submitted these applications to the township back in February. Obviously, there has been some delay in the review of these materials because of the COVID situation. We did grant extensions to the township to still mull over these applications and prepare for public hearings, and that's what's brought us to today, to this point today. And I just want to state that nothing in this PowerPoint is meant to supplement or change what was submitted in the initial application package. It is all complimentary to the materials that are in the rather extensive application binders that we submitted. So I'll do my best, I don't know if you have the application binders in front of you, or if you had had the chance to review those, but I'll do my best to call out where we did provide that information to the township. Just a little bit about Range, some of you are probably familiar with us, we have been operating in Cecil Township for, for some time. We are a leading independent natural gas producer, we're headquartered out of Fort Worth, Texas, but most locally, we have our offices here in Cecil Township in South Point. We have a few well sites in the township. You might be aware of the Augustine Well Site, which is currently undergoing drilling activity, the air rig is there. So in the application binders, we provided all of this information to the township, everything from the application form and fee. I'm not going to go through all of these items, you can see them in front of you, but we have our well site agreement, site plans, sound study, light study, information on our security, a draft PPC plan, our bonding information contractor list, things of that nature. All of them are highlighted here on this slide. And since the initial time of submission, we have supplemented with a couple of items. Things like an updated setback exhibit. We have received an ESCGP 3 from the DEP to build one of our locations, that was something we did not have at the onset of providing our applications to you. We've provided that to you. We did update our sound study, and I think that's it for the supplemental information. So just an overview of the Connor Samuel location. We're proposing a 911 address, just to put it in perspective for you. This is on 134 Grange Road, it's on 2...
What, do you use a handheld?
Sure. Sorry.
It should be right there.
Hurt my back after this meeting. Okay, sorry about that. So the Connor Samuel location, this is on two different parcels, both in the R1 zoning district off of Grange Road. We've identified the parcels there, you can see them. It's owned by the Shafoni family. And we're going to be right off of Grange Road, the address is 134 Grange Road. For this site, it would be built to house up to 14 wells. At this point in time, though, we are only proposing to develop five wells initially. But know that the pad, as built and as our plans have laid out, can accommodate up to 14 wells. We also have our traffic route on there. And as far as the township road improvements go, that would be something that our engineers would discuss with the township engineers. We would do some sampling of the roadway and determine if any improvements would be needed and what types of improvements those would be. I also just want to call your attention to the fact that in our initial application, in exhibits C and D, I believe we gave a tentative schedule for our operations. Since that time, that schedule has changed, the most current schedule is listed on this slide. So we would project to, to build this site beginning in 2021, based on our current plans. This next slide here just is a overview of the, the site plans. We're, we're proposing to disturb a total of 14.9 acres. The two parcels, when they're combined, are roughly 132 acres, so this is going to take up 14.9 acres. We would build a 315 by 460 foot pad, it would be accessed via an 822 linear foot access road. Your ordinance requires us to pave the first 50 feet, that's something we would do. And we do have the ESCGP 3 in our possession, the DEP granted that to us back on May 1st. This next exhibit is a setback exhibit, just shows some of the, the closest structures and property lines in relation to the, the well site and the proposed limited disturbance. The closest property is 116.6 feet away, and the closest structure is 580 feet away. In this exhibit, you can't see because it's too far away to depict, but the closest school would be the Cecil Intermediate School, and that is 3,600 feet away. The closest school property line is 3,070 feet away. This next slide, I apologize, it is a little bit difficult to read in, in this format, but hopefully you would have a copy there available to you. It is the sound study that we had done by a third party. Now, we assess the area, they will set up different receptors, and they'll model the sound as it would take place during different operational phases. So this first image shown in the, in the slide deck here is sound modeling during the air rig drilling. So you can see there are different receptors placed out there. The township ordinance allows for us to reach decibel levels of 62 at any point in time during the air, during drilling activity. And then in the evening times, it allows for decibel levels of 60. So you can see, what we are presenting here is an unmitigated sound model, so this is without any sound walls or any form of mitigation. This is what you're looking at. The model does project compliance, but we recognize that there are... The model does project compliance, but we recognize that there are various factors that could contribute to sound emanating from the pad, and we would consider putting up sound walls if that were to be a condition or something that the board wanted to mull over. But as you can see, we are projecting compliance. This is during the air rig. The next slide shows during the hydraulic fracturing operations, and this is also projecting compliance. So moving on to the Schultz application. This well site is proposed to be off of Galati Road. It is on property owned by Kay Schultz, also in the R1 zoning district. And similar to the Connor Samuel and most of the pads that we are building today, the pad can accommodate up to 14 wells. At this point in time, we are only planning on developing six. And we have our anticipated route there. And same with the Connor Samuel, we will be traveling upon some township roads to get to this site. Any necessary upgrades, Range would take that into consideration and consult with the township engineer on that. Also, similar to the Connor Samuel, our schedule has changed. Things have been pushed back. This updated schedule does reflect that. This next slide again shows the plans. The total limit of disturbance is 22 acres. The parcel itself that it will be on is 94 acres. We have a 480-foot pad, a 480 by 315-foot pad, excuse me, accessed via a 2,760-foot access road. Same situation, we will pave the first 50 feet. And for this site, we have had our ESCGP that was initially provided to the township. The DEP approved that back in 2017. This next slide just shows the setbacks. The closest property line is 576 feet away, and the closest structure is almost 900 feet away. We also measured the distance from the school buildings, and I just want to point out that the closest school building and school property line is actually not in Cecil Township and not within the Cannon McMillan School District. It is within the Fort Cherry School District. So Fort Cherry School is 8,700 feet away from this location, but the Cecil Intermediate School would be the closest school in Cecil Township, and that is 9,850 feet away for the property lines. We're looking at over 9,000 feet from the Cecil Intermediate property line and roughly 8,000 feet from the Fort Cherry property line. We also have the sound study for the Schultz. Similar to the Connor Samuel location, this is unmitigated sound, unmitigated, an unmitigated location, and it does project compliance with the township ordinance. But again, we're recognizing there could be other factors that contribute to sound at this location, and we may consider putting up sound walls. The closest receptor here, Receptor 1, according to the study, just to give you some idea, during drilling, unmitigated, is telling us that we would most likely be at 52.5 decibels, and we're allowed to be at 62 decibels. Just the sound study for the completions operations. Again, Receptor 1 puts us at 57.6 decibels. The allowable level in the township ordinance is 65 decibels. So just a little overview of what will happen at each of these locations. It all starts by constructing the well site. All of the work is done in accordance with our ESCGP and all of the Chapter 78A standards. It's approximately a three-month process. Now, that could change. It could be shorter. It could be longer. It involves clearing, leveling, graveling the location, all of the ENS controls being installed. And then those locations are always under inspection by the DEP and then a Range staff member as well. After the pad is built, we will drill the location. There may be gaps in time. We might build it. There might be a long gap. Then the air rig will come in. The air rig will drill the initial portion of the wells. It will drill all the vertical layer. And then the big rig will come in. It will drill the horizontal portions of the wells. Drilling is a 24/7 process, so it will be occurring in the night, in the morning, at any point in time. And during the drilling phase, we will have trailers on location to house our essential personnel. More of the essential personnel are laid out in the application binder, so we have various people that need to be on site at any point in time. Those will be there. Then after the drilling activity occurs, completions or hydraulic fracturing, some people refer to it as, that's the next part of the process of actually completing the wells. It's the process of pumping sand, water, chemicals down into the well bore in order to fracture the well. Depending on the length of these wells and their laterals, it depends on how long that might take. We're roughly estimating about a two-month process, and it is a 24/7 process. We're going to source the water from nearby locations. It may be sourced via truck, a meter vault, a water tap into a Pennsylvania American line, for example. We are considering putting up some temporary water storage at one location in order to complete the other. Those details are not flushed out yet, but we will have more information available at the time of the conditional use hearing. All of those are standard water transfer processes for Range. So after those operations are complete, the site is producing. It'll produce natural gas, condensate. It is unmanned, but somebody does check it on a daily basis, and it is monitored 24/7 from a remote location down in our Washington field office. Activity is not noticeable. The picture in that slide is just a picture of a producing pad. We also have information in the application binders about security. I know your township ordinance does ask of us to have some sort of security on the location, establish a PPC plan. We do have a draft PPC plan set up for this location. We'll need to confirm a 911 address through the township in order to finalize that. We provide training to first responders, orient them to the site. We'll use a cyber gate, which is a little more detailed in the binder. We'll use a cyber gate to ensure those who are supposed to have access to the site have access to the site. We utilize traffic control, and we will restrict our heavy truck traffic on the township roadways during the times in which any Cannon McMillan school bus traffic may be on the township roadways. This next slide just talks a little bit about environmental compliance. One of the, the image on the slide shows the measures that we take in order to set up the casing for each of these well bores to protect the water aquifers. That's just one example of environmental compliance. And the examples listed there, whether our conservation projects, our emissions reduction projects, air quality, our water recycling, disclosing our hydraulic fracture fluids. Those are just some of the ways in which we're committed to environmental compliance. Just a snapshot of what we do. So that's all for the PowerPoint. Thanks for sitting through it. I'm not sure if any of you have questions. I'd be more than glad to answer them or have anybody representing Range also help answer them. Sure, that's a good point. Is this the exhibit Carl? Okay. Yes, so for the Schultz location, and you may have noticed this from looking at the site plans, the site itself actually starts in Mount Pleasant Township. And when we enter the site, we're going to enter through Mount Pleasant Township, but the pad itself is in Cecil Township. Any questions? Carl, did you have anything else? No, okay.
You're with Leonard Smith, Sol Ray. Can you give us a take on the letters that you provided reviewing the documents?
First off, let me introduce myself. My name is John Heil. I want to review the document. We did a review for both, both applications and provided a letter dated June 17. This is the last letter we've provided. We're working with the applicant to address comments. We'll start with the Connor Samuel site. There are eight comments remaining. Three of those, three to four of those comments are actually more administrative. Regarding the excavation, they have indicated we'll submit an application for that date once the conditional use is approved. The applicant indicated that a geotechnical report was what provided the application somehow. We need to get that in the submission. We'll work with the county to make sure they get it.
Okay.
Make sure that it's lossable. And then bonding, the post-bonding was technically good. Under the stormwater review, there are a few items we need to be aware of. First and foremost is, they're proposing it was called a wet pond, which means water pond or lot. The ordinance requires all ponds be dry, so the board supervisor will have to issue a waiver to that. I don't intend on any representation for this vague measure. Second item on the stormwater is, the plan proposes the use of HDB plastic pipe through the embankment of the pond. The ordinance requires smooth steel or reinforced concrete pipe. So that item should be addressed. Third comment, and for this site, this is very important. The way the analysis was done for the stormwater management, they assumed the wet pond would dry when they did the ratings. So they used the volume of the area where water was sitting when a storm got to come through. Or the problem with that is the wet pond is coming wet a couple of meters. So you've just locked volume that you're assuming is there. So it's a good chance that the storm event may not function properly in a flooding, failure of the pond or in the emergency spillway, which should... I believe that needs to be addressed. And then there's just a simple note that needs to be added to the plan for the ordinance for stormwater management. The ODM agreement needs to be signed once that is implemented. And that's the comment to the Connor Samuel site. For the Schultz and our site, the first three comments are the same comment regarding the excavation. Bonding, rating, permanent application, and finding geotechnical work. For stormwater management, standard situation is wet pond, so they can get a failure for it. Counsel. Again, they're, this one, they're proposing watertight CPB pipe instead of the concrete or steel pipe. One of the issues with using plastic pipe, this type, there are two types of plastic pipe out there. There are the standard black plastic pipe that everyone sees if you go around. There's now called HP, high-performance plastic pipe. The manufacturer recommendations do not support bedding standard black plastic pipe in soil. Most of those embedded pipe or on, you go through the embankment. The water doesn't go, follow the stone through the embankment, ready to fill. The HD plastic, HP plastic pipe does permit bedding in soil. These are all proposed as regal plastic pipe, and again, the ordinance requires either steel or concrete. As a whole, compacting the soil and not stuff it. I don't realize there is a, we agree there's a typo on the one on the plan, either the plan or the one reference. Five, number seven, simple typo needs to be addressed. Calculations for... Analysis was done for a 25-year event and a 100-year event. And it's the same for conveyance, for channels, we have a conveying system, so I... The additional calculations show that that will... And the same thing with cross pipe underneath the access road. And then the last item is the...
If I could explain this for the behalf of Range. Basically, we acknowledge that there's certain permits that if we get zoning approval, we have to fall on again. But we haven't even filed for a rating permit yet to add to zoning approval. So in essence, it's premature. I'm not saying that these aren't issues. It's premature to be addressing them now. We have, however, even though we haven't filed an application at first, the township responded by a great deal of information. Oh, right, and we'll continue to do that. But actually, this issue came up in the appeal of the Augustine Patter. The court said those are technical issues. They're not to be addressed or any of them to be addressed. Stage after the next day. Again, we're, that's in particulars. For having a good get through the whole range, we can use it. At this point, it's premature to get, as I mentioned. That is the...
In your view of the plans, our ordinance 9-2011, the 22 items that are in there, have they met those items? In your opinion? Okay. Okay.
Yes, I know, I already... Trying to figure out how we would address... Right. This one, but we can also address that, the understanding that some of these are after.
Yeah. Address them later today.
I know it's jumping the gun a bit, but there is room. I'm assuming there's room on the site to expand the ponds, and I'm assuming the pipe material wouldn't be a large issue to revise.
We should have to expand the ponds to make these stormwater numbers work. There's some very conservative values that are placed in these chapters. If we go get stormwater reviews, throw carbon dioxide protection as part of these. It's kind of difficult when you get guidance from one review engineer telling you to model it, look at it one way, and you've got another engineer telling you to do it another way. I think it's a little complicated. But we've got to get our statement.
Okay.
So that's, I think we will be able to work through some of the issues. As far as the pipe goes, we certainly believe that corrugated plastic pipe works well.
Sure. So we have anti-seep collars that are on that pipe to limit the amount of tracking along that pipe as well. So we feel that's an appropriate type of material to be used in this situation. Then there's some other details that we will, we will work through. We're working on the geotech reports that we'll provide. And again, as Blaine said, we feel these are things that are kind of after doing, but we want to show, you know, good faith that we are working through these issues as well.
Carl, is it accurate to say that the department, as part of your earth disturbance permit, encourages the use of wet ponds versus dry ponds?
Sure. And actually, some of the details that were pointed out, so this has been a little bit of a debate with some of the review engineers at D E P. And certainly, these soils in southwestern P A, you know, typically you can't have infiltration basins that have groundwater within a couple of feet of the, of that basin. So we kind of, you know, rule out infiltration basins, which are the primary way to get a volume stormwater control. So we look to wet ponds as to providing that kind of volume control. And we had just a debate about, again, how we would model that being whether it was a full pond full of water or it was an empty pond. And we've done both ways with D E P, whichever review engineer we get, we kind of have to switch up, you know, gears and, and change the calculations. But there's a lot of conservative numbers in these approaches. We're using some high runoff coefficients for these locations where we don't really see those kind of runoffs from, you know, these big gravel pads that have a lot of void space in there. So, but again, we'll, we'll work with John and we'll, we'll get through these issues.
Would Range be interested in considering adding the sound attenuation walls to both sites? It's something that's obviously, you know, you meet the requirements, but if there's issues after the, you know, the work starts. It'd be easier to address those ahead of time by putting the walls up first than trying to come back and do it second, probably cheaper to do it first, too. I think that's something, if somebody would disagree, we would recommend that would be something we would pass on to the supervisors as another conditional use.
Yeah, it would certainly be a proactive approach and something that we have done before and would be willing to do again.
And just to add on, Jocelyn, we'd appreciate to, you know, and not just put up walls for the sake of putting up walls, but to target the areas that, that, you know, potentially are more problematic.
So not to get, not to get in any type of technical debate, because I'm by no means any, any expert on it. But about the, Mr. Calderon's question about the pipe, is it, is it, Range's position that, that they're going to hold fast on the, on the type of pipe that they're using? Or is Range willing to conform with the township requirements for the sake of just being able to put that item aside?
Well, the steel pipe makes no sense to me. I don't even understand why you would spec a smooth wall steel pipe in this situation. But yeah, I mean, I guess a reinforced concrete pipe, you know, could be used, but again, typically, you know, ninety percent of the outfall barrels installed on the thermal basins in Pennsylvania are going to be polyethylene pipe. So, I mean, we'll do concrete if asked, but we would certainly, you know, request a, you know, waiver from that requirement in lieu of that corrugated plastic pipe. But if, if we get turned down to that waiver, we'll certainly, we'll put in the concrete pipe.
What are you guys using on the existing pads that you have now in Cecil Township?
Everything's corrugated plastic.
Okay.
The other issue, I guess, that we would also, you know, it does, suppose to say wet ponds are not allowed. So that would again be a sort of a waiver request that, that we would make as, as well. Because again, this falls in line with the permit we have at D E P. And to deviate from that permit is going to be a problem for us.
Any other questions? Jeff? Okay, based upon what we know, is anyone willing and able to make a motion at this point in time?
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll move to recommend approval of the Range Resources Connor Samuel well site conditional use contingent upon addressing comments in the Lennon Smith Solaray's letter dated June seventeen, twenty twenty. And the additional following condition of the addition of sound attenuation walls as discussed.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Crutt, seconded by Ms. Hamilton. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now for the Schultz Bernard eleven two eight nine well site, same thing, and we're willing to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Range Resources Schultz Bernard well site conditional use contingent upon addressing the comments in the Lennon Smith Solaray letter dated June seventeen, twenty twenty. Addressing those comments as well as a recommendation to construct sound attenuating walls.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Calderon, seconded by Mr. Crutt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Okay, moving on to application twenty twenty dash zero zero nine, ViaSat dish facility conditional use. You mean, these notes?
No, no, the, any letters or?
I don't think there are any letters for these.
It's a tape, it references a tape.
It was part of the email earlier today.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay, it's on the email?
Yeah. Call it up on your email if you want to see.
Yeah, that's what I do.
I know.
Exactly very nice.
This does a wonderful job.
Yep. Yeah, it's right here. It is.
I'll bet you said so to be the last one.
It's probably, yeah, it's the last, the last, last, or the.
Last couple.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Randy S. Jones. I'm here on behalf for of ViaSat. Just to kind of clear a few things up like I did for the zoning hearing board, that you see the name SSC over a lot of the documents, but I'm with ViaSat. And it's not a contractor. I think it's important and the company's policy is that when we do public hearings like this and before the public, that a company employee represents the company. That you're actually talking to somebody who will live at the site, vantage the site, and work with the landlord as time goes on. Now, we were before the zoning hearing board on Monday for a use variance, which they granted with the condition that we followed the wireless communications ordinance. Just to start things off, that was a little different than what we had anticipated. So we don't have everything completed, but working with staff, Mr. King and Ms. Ross, will have all of those things wrapped up by Board of Supervisors meeting. But I just wanted to start that off ahead of time, which I've already given some of the documents to Mr. King as soon as we got here, we were able to get some of it done. Tonight, we're here to ask you to recommend the conditional use permit be approved by the Board of Supervisors, which that hearing so far is going to be set for July sixth. And we will have everything ready by then. So once again, we're seeking approval for this conditional use application to place a satellite access node at Richard Odie's property located at Seven Ridge Street in Candensburg or Hendersonville or Cecil Township. It seems to have a couple of different city names. When I was over there talking to people, they called it the Hendersonville. So I actually met quite a few of the neighbors over the last two days. And I learned a lot about the neighborhood. Obviously, I'm from Colorado and our company is based out of Carlsbad, California. Who is ViaSat? I get that question quite a bit, so I'd like to spend a little time talking about who we are. We are a satellite act, satellite company, obviously. We provide services to the federal government through the Department of Defense, through the national security agencies. But we also provide wireless broadband internet services through, to the public. This site, just to be clear, is for civilian purposes, to provide wireless, high-speed broadband to the community. But I do think it's important that if you look up on VSAT, you'll see what we do. And, you know, things like the, just kind of a little deeper, Air Force One, all their communications run through our systems. So when the president is on Air Force One and makes the news media, which is quite a bit, that is coming through our systems in Denver, actually. We were founded in nineteen eighty-six. We have over a million residential customers, roughly fifty-two hundred members of our, in our team, two billion sales. And the rest is here, all of our offices you can see listed here. Like again, like I said again, I'm out of the Denver, Colorado office. I live in Westminster, Colorado, but I always like to make it clear, I'm from Missouri originally, even though I've been there for twenty, twenty-one and a half years, twenty-one years now, believe it or not. What do we do? If you're flying United Airlines and you're using their internet, you're using our system. We have Delta, so it's not go-go, or it's no-go, as we like to call it. Residential, high-speed internet right now at the moment at, through our ViaSat two program and our other satellites that are there. Like I said, the Department of Defense and other platforms, as you can see here. How does this system work? Why do I need a satellite access node? Which is another question I get. Our friend here on the internet, if he doesn't have access to Comcast or to the local telephone company or a cable company, Comcast here, so I use them. He would use ours, he would purchase our system, or he may purchase it anyway, because he's a cable company, which is not unusual. So to work this, he needs our dish sitting on top of his roof that are very similar to a dish that you would see from DirecTV. His computer talks to that dish. That dish talks to the satellite that will be launched next year. The satellite talks to what I'm here to talk to you about today, the satellite access node. The satellite access node takes where he's trying to get on the internet, to his website, then down the fiber line again to the satellite access node, back to the satellite, back to his home, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You can see without the satellite access node, this system doesn't work. Where is this one placed at? It is on a Richard Odie's property at Seven Ridge, like I talked about. Here is an overhead shot of it, Mr. Odie's house that's several hundred feet away. It's actually down, if you're familiar with this property, down in that far corner, almost right where that dot's at. It will sit behind a, we'll get into it a little more, but it'll sit behind a wooden fence. It has a six-foot dish that sits on a steel rod, or still post, I should say, with the overall height being eight feet. This is an up close, what's there now is grass. It's an open field, what's there now on Mr. Odie's property. What else is unique to this property is that the power is sitting right there. You can see in the picture on the left off, down from that where our site would be, the fiber line is the picture on the right. And then you can see where our site would be sitting at. That's sitting not at Cardinal, but the next one far north, I'm not exactly sure the name of that, pardon me, but Cardinal Drive is the next one up, which I've been down quite a bit. And the fiber line will be run down to his property, down underground, and eventually to, it'll come to that pole that I showed you here, and then it'll go underground over to the site. Here's a kind of a layout of what we're talking, not kind of, it's exactly from the plans, what we're talking about here. The satellite has to be aimed in a particular direction, eighty-nine degrees is what we call the eighty-nine degrees orbital slot is what we call it. That's where the satellite is eventually going to be docked. And some people ask me, why is it quote cockeyed? That's the question I get. And that's because we want everything in line to, towards that satellite, it's kind of an efficient way to use the property and how we can keep it down to seven hundred square feet. What are we putting there? This is a layout, there will not be pouring concrete, but this is a mock-up at our Georgia location. And I like to show this because pictures tell a thousand words. You can see the dish isn't that big, you can see the post, you can see our equipment that supports it, the oscillator that's behind it. It's a very, very innocuous setup when it's all said and done. This is an example of what we've built in Logan without the dish with the chain link fence, which we are not proposing here since it's sitting in residential neighborhood. But I think it gives you a good feel for how things you can see through it. But this is how things will be laid out, and it's, once again, facing towards that eighty-nine slot. This is the Palmeroy sitting in their fairgrounds, actually. And this is the eight-foot fence that we are proposing. I did want to discuss, because I saw in the, in the engineer letter, it said nine feet, but I could swear that the ordinance said no more than eight. So I, I think we need, I don't know if that's a typo or how that worked out, but I'm willing to discuss that, just to make sure I get things right.
I think the original plan had a nine-foot fence. I think the revised plan.
Six.
Six.
Yeah, it had six, that's correct. And then we, after we became into the wireless ordinance, it's now becoming eight.
Okay, you're aware of that.
It has to be eight.
Yeah, it will be eight. That's, that's, I talked to my engineering firm, I don't know, four hours ago now. I got this question by the zoning board hearing, and it was a very good question, why Richard Odie's property? And the answer is fiber, the orbital slot, and the power is all right there. It is really unique for us. It is so unique that this site is, the fiber line that it's running through will also support many sites down the line. It is an incredibly important site to us. And it's why we decided when Liz had asked us, and we went through some gyrations here to get where we're at, because we don't fit in your ordinance per se, and I have run into that before, that when I say the orbital slot, it's no surprise, it's many, many billions to put a satellite in the air. We want to get the most bang for the buck. And this hits that eighty-nine, there's no trees in the way. I kind of wish I would have had this picture, because the chair had asked, how do you know you're not going to hit a chair, or hit a tree? And well, that's how I know, because I can take it actually off my phone, believe it or not. And I just wanted to kind of share with this board and with the Board of Supervisors that everything is right there, and that's why we believe that it won't interfere at all. I'd like to interject, because I was, met so many of the neighbors yesterday and this morning, or this afternoon, that they agreed. I didn't have anybody going, what the heck? You know, we got, I think I gave Mr. King eight letters today. I've got two waiting for me. Mr. Odie's going to bring one in tomorrow, he'll drop it off to Liz tomorrow, and I'm going to go pick one up after her father signs it, and I'll bring it in. So we'll be at ten people who have waived their setback rights. And so I actually got the question like, well, why are you bothering me with this? And my comment was, because the city asked me to, and it's important that you know what the heck's going on in your neighborhood. And they were thankful for that. And we were able to correct one, he didn't sign, we have to think about some more. But the gentleman, he thought it was one of those big thirty-foot dishes like you see, you know, at some Comcast facility or DirecTV. And once he said, oh, no, it's only six feet, and then he, oh, you know, and he didn't realize. Of course, he didn't have the drawings, but nonetheless, we had a really good feeling, and it's funny, I was telling my wife this, I ran into the local black snake twice while she was over there, so. He didn't object either, so it was pretty funny. He patrols the whole neighborhood, because I ran into him on Ridge, and then I was over on Cardinal, and there he was again. And I was like, holy cow, this dude, dude runs this, he's like the mayor of the area, so.
Hendersonville, yes.
So anyway, he was a big one, too. I'm from Missouri, so I'm used to him, but nonetheless. I was asked by Liz to go through the conditional use discussion, and so I thought I would do that, because some of this doesn't apply to us. The first one, this is a notice, we did, we did comply with it. We did, we did comply with the notice. The, all the property owners within 300 feet were notified, and when I talked to some of them, some of them remembered their notification, some didn't. None of them, you know, they didn't seem surprised, and I brought it up. And the next one is.
This is for conditional use, it's 300.
Yes, this is out of the conditional use. Yeah, or out of your ordinance, word for word. The next one's applicant proposing new communication, demonstrate effects and obtaining permission amount antenna. And the certified owners, review the surrounding area, turn that we were not. No, there's no structures. When I was looking at this, basically, you're saying, hey, we want to use existing structures if you're wireless. For 17 years, I worked for the carriers, so I'm very familiar with this requirement. We can't attach to towers. They'd bring the tower down. The wind loading on those would be unbelievable. We have to be underground, so there was nothing to look at, to be honest, and we have, and so this one really doesn't apply to us, but I, we've covered it anyway. The next one, the applicant shall demonstrate that we have a license. I gave that license today to Mr. King when I came here. We do have a license in the Federal Communications Commission, probably not surprising. Proof that we comply with all safety standards from the Federal Communication Systems, I gave that report also to Mr. King's before this meeting, I got that. Proof we shall provide that communication facility has been reviewed and has not been determined hazard-free by the FAA. This one doesn't apply to us, we're only eight feet tall. There's no lighting, we're not required under FCC regulations or FAA regulations to even contact them, so we didn't. The applicant shall submit evidence that the tower, existing structure and its method installation has been designed by civil engineer, and our drawings are stamped by an engineer licensed in the state of Pennsylvania. We can't attach to a structure, and so that part of us didn't really pertain to us. The only communication tower shall be required to conduct periodic inspections of the tower. Once again, this is a tower, only eight feet tall. We do have 24-hour surveillance on it. That is, if someone messes with the dish, or someone messes with the cabinet, it, and we do have our, once a year, our techs usually go out, not unless something goes wrong, but for the most part, our maintenance crews rarely have to go out to these sites. Adequate access means the public street, we can get to it by the existing paved driveway that is there. There has been some talk about not, in Engineering's letter from, I think it's Gateway, is that, is that correct? Yeah, from Gateway, that we couldn't have a road that created dust. So, we decided, I don't know, about three or four hours ago, and the landlord agreed that we just won't put a road in, we really don't need one as close as it is. I mean, I walked it, but the tax can't walk a couple hundred feet, and maybe they might have to go to the gym or something. I mean, it's really not that far. So, there won't be a road on the new drawings, when you get those updated drawings. So, that will take care of that. They'll only show that we have a right to a 20-foot access easement through there. The distance between the communication tower and the property line, we meet all setbacks. Once again, it's only eight feet tall. That's a fall zone, I presume, but like I said, you can even see it when you go down the hill. The maximum height is 100 feet. Once again, ours is only eight feet tall. I'm not sure why the computer locked up, but we'll do it this way. The facilities which are erected, maintain, may not include offices, long-term vehicles. There are no offices there, people don't stay there, it's behind a eight-foot cedar fence. We will comply with the requirement to report back to the township. I'm not sure exactly how that works. My past experience has been that the township says, hey, it's in the reminder, I'll make sure that it gets put in our property management systems and get put in our operation systems so that they do that, because I'm not part of operations, I do the site development part, but we will more than comply with that, and I'm sure that the staff will let us know if we don't comply, that we have no problems with that. All conditions approved under section automatically lapse, that is very common, and we also have that we're contractually obligated with Mr. Odie, if we abandon the prop, abandon it, that we have to remove it. We wouldn't leave it behind anyway, but I know some companies go bankrupt and they say that, and then you've got equipment sitting all over the place. Once again, we respectfully ask the planning commission to approve the conditional use application so that we can move forward towards the town, Board of Supervisors of the township. We believe it's a win-win situation. I've talked to a lot of people, that high-speed broadband internet is not as particularly accessible here. Our customers throughout the United States are, where I come from, rule like rural Missouri, and folks don't get that, and they don't provide, and companies are not providing that, but we're able to do that, and it will be comparable speeds to the cable companies and the phone companies. As a matter of fact, we think we can beat them, and we certainly will beat them with our customer service. And do we have any questions? I will answer any questions, I'm willing to work on. I know there probably have to be some conditions, because we didn't get everything up to speed because things changed on us a little bit, but we are more than willing to work anything out to move forward. And I do thank everybody for their time, you know, it's late at night for you, and it's only 6 o'clock for me, because I'm two hours behind you. And I'll leave it at that.
So, if it's not going to be on a concrete pad, what is it going to sit on?
It will sit on, we will put gravel to keep it from washing out, and it has below that weed blocker, so it's a gravel compound.
And what's the size of the?
The size.
Size of the pad, the gravel?
It will take, initially, we'll take up the first 300 square feet, and then if we need any more, then we'll take up the 700, but the first 300 will be built first.
So, you're below the threshold of requiring any state permits?
Right.
For the change in cover?
That's right. Yep, we're not required to do any of that.
Okay.
I have a letter dated June 17th. As, as stated, the, this was put before the zoning hearing board for a use variance. They were granted the use variance to put a satellite dish, which is actually in our ordinance, to have it in the R1, but the zoning hearing board also decided to classify this as a communication facility. So, when I spoke to the zoning hearing board solicitor this week, he said, I said, is this, is this dish, is it a tower? And he said, yes, you have to treat it like that. So, that's why we walked through that, that's why this, this presentation was given tonight on the conditional use. So, the only thing that's really of any significant issues, other than was outlined here tonight, is there's a 500-foot requirement that this be away from any residential dwelling. And there is a provision in there, if you get a waiver from that, that you don't need that requirement. So, you guys are working on the waiver right now, you're pretty confident you're going to be able to get all the signatures?
Yes, I am. The, the two closest neighbors signed, so, and I, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the neighborhood out there, but the one, one woman, her name's Mary, she was born in the house, her parents lived in the house, and, you know, and she helped me with who was a renter and who wasn't, because she's, she's been there forever. So, yes, we have attained 10, I think it's now, and that's only been in, since I knew about this.
Yesterday.
Yeah, yesterday. Yesterday morning.
So, you need a total of 18, right?
I, we need a total of 17 is what we have it at, is 17.
Okay. Well, needless to say, that they're going to take that approach related to it. There's no lighting proposed, as, as Lawrence pointed out, there is no need for stormwater management, especially now that the road's gone. So, I had a letter that really addressed the conditional use first, and then the land development, there were some minor comments related to that. There's really not much going on here. There's really now probably going to be no improvements at all, so they probably won't even need to bond the site if they can get past the conditional use issue. The only thing that, that could throw them for a loop, if they don't get all of the, all of the signatures, and maybe this is structured in your motion, and I don't think the suggested motion has it, but it would be that you approve the conditional use, condition upon them obtaining all the approvals by, of the waivers, otherwise they would have to get a variance for that setback. That's what I would suggest on the conditional use. And the land development, just based upon my letter, it's pretty straightforward.
Is yard maintenance a, an issue? Lawn or yard maintenance? Is that something to consider?
It's got a weed block, so there's, you know.
Okay. So, the entire site is?
It's going to be surrounded by a, by a cedar fence.
That's right, an eight-foot cedar fence, and then what we're using will have the weed blocker. Mr. Odie mows the yard. If you go out there now, you'll say, well, where we're going's not mowed, but he graciously left the stakes in, so he mowed around them, and so people have been able to see what's going on there, but all that'll be gone.
Can I ask two questions? Why cedar, for one thing? And what do the signs say that you have on the fence around it?
Cedar, it lasts a long time, it typically blends in, that has got a lot of woods over there, and, you know, we would use chain link, but we believed that since it was in a residential neighborhood, it'd be more palatable behind a cedar fence than it would be behind a chain link fence. Chain link fence, the maintenance is very, very low. Cedar, as we all know, as time goes on, then it requires maintenance. But in residential neighborhoods, we, we almost always do cedar. I think the neighbors would appreciate that, and we'd much rather just stay with cedar, and I think that staff probably doesn't want phone calls, hey, I can see this thing once it's done. In my experience for 21 years, is that people just don't want to look at the equipment. And so, that's why. The other question is about the signs. There's a warning sign about the EMF, the electromagnetic frequencies, not to stand in front of them, there is a sign to call us if, I don't know, let's say, well, Mr. Odie is part of the police department, but typically, let's say, he, well, he would know who to call. Little unusual, because obviously, he's a member of the police department here, that's not, that's no secret. But let's say he wasn't, or he was gone, let's say he was on vacation, and his neighbor, Carol, that I met, said, hey, the gate's open. She wanted to, she could call the number that we put on there and say, hey, and our guys in the knock, we'll say, oh, okay, and then send a tack out to close the gate, for example, or maybe somebody broke in, maybe we've, in my past lives, I've had people actually camp in them, and.
Really in the electromagnetic field, then.
Well, if you're not in front of it, you're okay, you can stand behind it. I had one, he was violent with our tax, way, not with ViaSat, but when I was a regional manager of cricket. The police, it ended up being a scuffle to get him out of there. He had put up clotheslines, he had an electric cooker, and he had plugged it into our, we had an outlets there, because the tax needed to plug in. He was, he was, yeah, he.
Living.
He'd put a tarp down.
K O A, yeah.
Lifestyle's a bitch and famous there, so if that happened, you know, Carol could call her. I suspect if that happened, she'd call the police. But anyway, nonetheless, that's the signs that are there, RF warnings and the tack, and a no trespassing sign is also there.
Do you have any studies on the long-range effects of those transmissions?
The. The study that I gave you, that. Not long-term. I, I think what, where that, it doesn't broadcast out to the neighborhood. It goes directly in a beam to the satellite. So, if you're not standing in front of it, or really next to it, there's nothing. Unlike the cell phone carriers, if it was a cell tower, it would shoot out, and everybody in the neighborhood would get some RF exposure. But if you're not standing in front of us, there's, there's no way, it just, it's impossible.
Do we deal with them all the time in roofing?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Dish is, dish is to some extent, but cell tower, and cell antennas all the time, and RF, even in our case, where we're roofing and it's broadcasting out, it's shooting out, it's over our heads.
Yeah.
As long as our guys aren't climbing up something to stand out in front of the antenna, they're good.
That's exactly true.
Very direct.
Nothing, nothing at all.
I would say that's, that's how we're trained.
Not to stand in front of it. Yeah. 21 years, and I've been around them, and still fine.
What happens after the end of the 21 years on the?
The satellite will be decommissioned, and then our leases end, and then we have, under the agreement, to restore the land back to the way we found it minus normal wear and tear, and in this case, really just replant the grass and take the gravel back up, and get the foundation out, which won't take much, and put it back to the way we found it. Ours is a seven-day build, so it doesn't take very long to take it down and put it back up. So, the neighbors won't be putting up with, you know, they'll put up with roughly a week of building daytime, they don't, they don't work at night like the, the gas and oil folks do. But during the daytime, there'll be some noise, and there's no doubt, but the two closest folks know that, because we, like I said, I talked to them, and so did, Mr. Odie did too.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody willing to entertain a motion at this time for the conditional use?
I'll make a motion to approve application 2020009, ViaSat dish facility conditional use, based, contingent upon Gateway's letter dated June 17th, 2020, being addressed.
And also obtaining all 17 waivers.
And also obtaining all of the waivers. Yeah, I was looking at the, are we approving both of these at the same?
One at a time, one at a time.
Okay, so the site plan was the one that had all the waivers associated with it?
The conditional use permit did.
Okay, I'm.
We added it to the conditional use also.
Gotcha. So, yeah, all 17 waivers as well.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mr. Crutt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries for conditional use, jumping to the site plan. Anybody willing to entertain a motion for that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the ViaSat dish facility land development plan, contingent on addressing all comments in the Gateway Engineer's Letter dated June 17th, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Cauldron, seconded by Ms. Hamilton, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Any other business?
May I take one of these?
Help yourself, yeah.
Basically, as a, as an aside, just to get everybody caught up, previously, you've asked for updates on comprehensive plan and that type of thing. Everything has been on hold. I do have the recorded Board of Supervisors meetings out there on our website, you'll see they're very basic, brief, I mean, the longest meeting, I think, was 35 minutes. So, we basically did what, what had to be done, so we're getting back, you know, on track, and comprehensive plan is one of the things at the, at the top, so maybe, hopefully next month, I'll have a little more information.
Okay, thanks, Chuck. Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. What's it bad for all those?
No, it was actually.
Yeah.
It was really good. Great to see everybody, sir.
Yeah, I wasn't sure we were ever going to meet again, with things were going.
Everybody was so good and healthy.
All COVID-free.